Order, roll call.
Judge Marta Ponce.
Present.
Commissioner Nocelenda.
Here.
Commissioner Alonzo Taramona.
Here.
Commissioner Feliz Taramonas. Commissioner Rado, you're both here.
We do have one absence, that is Commissioner Taramatas. We do have a quorum. 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance and Salute the Texas Flag. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Intervene well for justice, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong. Honor the Texas flag, let the allegiance to Texas once taken under God, one indivisible.
Test the only oath of presenters. Please be advised when anyone is here to present before Commissioner Corvior in the room. Public comments. Good morning. Also, I do want to notify, I do want to notify the public that as per the Texas Government Code 551.007B, public comments will be allowed at the beginning of every Commissioners' Court meeting under the public comments. The speakers must first properly submit the public comments form to the county clerk. And please briefly describe the subject matter. All public comments are limited to agenda items only. We do have a public comment. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Corvior Seager with Operation Identification at Texas State University. And this is my colleague, Dr. Laurie Swenson. Hopefully you familiar to you guys. So we had submitted, trying to get on the regular agenda today, but it's been the wrong paperwork. So for our public comment, we're just here to see if there is any progress made in our proposal for exemptions at County Number One, we've been number four. I know that y'all can't make any decisions since we're not on the regular agenda, but we will be here after the meeting if you're available. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
1.6, Approval of Minutes, Regular Meeting, January 27.
Last Commissioners' Court, I ask on the, to re-advertise for the building, to erect the building for the basketball court. You told me to put in the agenda. I sent the agenda item ahead of time and it's not on the agenda.
Ms. McDonald.
I need to get it advertised by today, so I don't know if we can, I can still put in the newspaper and then bring it back next Commissioners' Court?
We can put it on the newspaper because we had approved it at the last Commissioners' Court meeting. And the purpose of this meeting was so that we could open the bids. Obviously, it wasn't put on the, on the agenda, and I will take full responsibility for my staff to re-advertise it. 2.1, Presentation of Check by SM Energy for Donation Sports Complex. However, that is going to be an agenda item because we will have it approved. There is a addendum that was added, so at that time, I'll recall that. Yes, sir. I'm going to go back to 1.6, Ms. McDonough. Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, January 27, 2025. Thank you, Commissioner Gormona.
Subject to no correction, so move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gormona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Ms. McDonough, I also want to put on the record that Commissioner Taramatas is present. 2.2, Informational, Place Hog Traps at the Golf Course Due to Hogs Messing Up the Greens and Safety for Golfers.
Judge, this is an item that was placed just for informational purposes to, for transparency. We had an issue with hogs. We think, we thought they were hogs. Turned out to be having this in the golf course, within the golf course and the airport area. And basically, they were destroying some of the greens and along the outer edges of the greens due to the moisture around there. And then they, we trailed them to where they were going across the land strip, which would have caused a major issue for any plane trying to depart or land. So in speaking to our county attorney, I'd like that we were allowed to place some traps that was also done in the past. And we caused a total of eleven heavily. And, but we placed it all there just for informational purposes. We don't want the vote to be that we were out hog hunting or trying to catch hogs down in the golf course. We were trying to catch it, but you remove it and place them in the outskirts of town at our county one yard, moving east.
Thank you. 3.1, Approval of Bonds.
Yeah, one bond.
Excuse me? That's why I said I got, we removed it to an agenda item. We do have one bond, and that is for a deputy district clerk. Are there any questions?
Motion, Judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonzo Gormona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Uranda. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2, Discussion and Appropriate Action Requesting Letter of Support for Land Bank Initiative NHS of Dimon County.
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Good morning.
I was already on the agenda. I made my presentation already before last year. It was on the agenda for finance. I was asking for a financial request, but I amended it since it was told to me that it'd be put on the budget later on this year. But all we're asking for right now is at least a letter of support as we move forward so we can have all the parties communicating with each other. I've already obtained a letter of support from the city. So I'm just, right now, what they're asking for is just a letter of support so we can all be in communication as we try to develop the land bank for the community.
I have a question for you, Mr. Coates. Who advised you that it was going to be put on the budget later on?
Whoever is in the office, I called. Because I was on the agenda in December, then it moved. And I was, that's the reason why I spoke only for a couple of minutes in January, because they advised me that it was going to be moved to the budget.
Is our budget, July?
Or June or July?
July, yes, sir. July is when we start budget hearings, and we don't do budget approval until October.
So that's, so, and plus, it's such as, I understand that it's such a big task undertaking, so I didn't feel, I feel like we can wait for the financial list. I want to get everything else in place first before we, before I even come back to the table and even ask for money. Because some of the things that we're asking for is just, once we establish the land bank, and you say, whoever is the manager of the properties, y'all can just decide to give it to us. That's not even a financial ask. The only thing we're asking for in the future is three properties to start developing from the tax delinquent list.
Yeah, well, we can't give any property or anything away without first Commissioners' Court approval.
So that's why I'm just asking for today is just a letter of support, just to say that we can start communicating and getting everybody, because we have to get the city on board, but then we have to get the county on board as well, and the attorneys, so we can understand the law 379E, make sure it's set up and structured properly.
Do you remember the number that you called? For the office that you took?
I always just call the county office and press, I think it's two or three to go up to, yeah, that's whoever answers the phone now.
The judge is off.
Yes.
The letter of support is not agreeing to anything.
Not agreeing to.
It's just that supporting the point of action that you're hoping to.
Yes. As I said, they're requesting from the city. Nothing, nothing going to be binding, it's just agreeing and letting Mr. Strada, the executive director, let him know that we are going to be at least communicating and moving forward to work out all the details.
I have a question, Judge.
Go ahead.
So who would be putting this letter of support to the other person?
It looks like the county judge I'm reading.
I do have a template that can.
Well, so you have a basic deal.
I have a basic template I can send in.
Okay. I think at this point, the concerning point is what is actually on the, how is the letter of support?
That's exactly what I was reading right now, Commissioner. And then my concern is, I was reading this letter that there's a letter of support by Tracy King, and my, this is from dated November 2024. And this particular letter says that, it's a letter of support that the land bank, which Mr. Coates is a representative of, will acquire and redevelop vacant, abandoned, and tax delinquent properties in the community. These investments will address the need for affordable housing, especially for low to moderate income families. The program will be beneficial to the community and revitalize neglected properties and build a brighter future. I have no problem with, obviously, with the authorization of this Commissioners' Court to do a letter of support. I just don't want to be committed with a letter of support, and I don't want to be a hypocrite and write you a letter of support that I'm supporting this purpose, and then we come back to Commissioners' Court and we don't approve to give you land for free or whatever it is that your cause is. And to me, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to be of the position that I'm gonna say I'm gonna approve it and, and give you a letter of support when, I think at this juncture, I don't know if the whole court's in agreement in wanting to give an entity free property or property that the constituents, we resell it through Purdue. That's my only concern, because I don't want to tell you, Mr. Coates, I'm gonna write you this letter of support approving, or that I'm supporting to redevelop abandoned property, and then we're not necessarily in agreement to give you that property.
So yeah, we can modify that and take that, that part out. I think, I don't have it on me. I'm sorry. The letter from this, from the city manager, it didn't have all of that language in it. It was just an agreement that we will be, you know, working together so we can try to develop.
I think it's a great cause. I genuinely do. I think it's a great cause. I think that's something, you know, that we've discussed ad nauseam with my grants and planning writer in terms of trying to find grants so that we can build homes for the elderly and whatnot. I think it's a great cause. I just don't know in terms of, in speaking with our tax delinquent attorneys, if this is something that the county can afford to give away free property. You understand what I'm saying?
But I'm looking at some of your tax delinquent properties, been on the rolls since 2007, and it is not generating any money currently. That's the whole reason why this, this state of Texas developed this law. So, because I know I'm talking to Houston, there's different sections of 379. We fall up under E. I think Dallas was up under C, and I think it's 379C, 379D is all variations, but they all have figured out a way to be able to make, especially community development centers, nonprofits like ourselves, to be able to return these properties back to, to the tax rolls. And of course, it's just helping us by.
And I'm glad you brought that up. I think that that's something that we need to discuss thoroughly with our tax delinquent attorneys, because Dimon County has had tax rolls since 2007, and there's no money being generated. Obviously, there's a problem somewhere. There has to be some accountability for our tax delinquent attorneys if we're supposed to be bringing in revenue since 2007, and there hasn't been any, then there's a problem there.
And that's why this letter will go along the way as well, because I've already talked to Mr. Cabello, I believe.
Cabello.
Yeah, he's one of them. And also trying to schedule, since his office is in San Antonio, I was trying to schedule a meeting. So if I had this letter to just have a little bit more, I guess, give me a little bit more gravitas to, to talk to him, like, so we can, we can work together and try to figure out what can we do. There's different options, but I just, that's the only reason why we're just asking for a letter of support, saying, hey, it's okay, that we move forward just in communication. If it doesn't work out for the county, then there's other options that we can look at as a nonprofit. But I really, right now, think this is going to be very beneficial for both you and, and Nippon Housing Services.
And at what cost, what would be the cost of, I know that each president has a price, but is it affordable for the?
So right now, if you get in, if you're figuring, they're going to be paying. So we have the option to, where if we just come in and just bid on one of the tax delinquent properties, I believe one of them, I spoke to in the tax assessor's office, was about $22,000. If we have to pay that $22,000, of course, we're going to have to add that to the total cost at the end of it, you know, once we get finished rehabbing that, that, that specific property. If that property was given, that, that one has been on the tax roll for, since 2007. So if it was given to us, of course, that lowers the cost, our upfront cost. We're looking at, after I talked to Mr. Vargas, for one of the properties, we can go in $90,000 to rebuild, and we're, we're looking at a target goal, selling it for about $100,000, $500,000, $10,000. With our, for, for the land bank, it's not supposed to be for making extreme amount of profits. It's supposed to be giving back to the community and provide people with low income, especially an opportunity to have their first home. That was one of the communications that I had with the city, is that a lot of, a lot of people are coming, are buying mobile homes, but of course, because there's no low income homes for them to, to purchase here, here in Carrizo. So of course, with a mobile home comes with higher interest rates. We're trying to do, we're trying to get lower interest rates, and you know, a 30-year loan is better, and a home is better than a mobile home, of course.
Okay. So can we approve a letter of support, but like you reworded the wording that's just saying that we hope to come to a resolution conclusion with the company? So it's not really saying that we're going to give or give anything to them, just hoping that we have a working relationship, just maybe found common ground in the future?
Probably three months. In three months, we'll revisit to see where we stand.
Like if you reword it, Judge?
I have no problem, like I said, with writing the letter. I just don't want to commit to something that we cannot commit to, or that it's not in the best interest of the county taxpayers. That's, that's my only problem. Go ahead.
I believe the issue at this point is that you're requesting a letter of support from the county.
Yes.
Which in a way, we would end up having ties, not necessarily, what I'm trying to say is, if, if a state representative or the city gives you a letter of support, there's no tie, they're not going to be approving, giving you, or allowing you to take over property.
No, sir.
The county is, which we, we would end up having to approve or not approve the, the properties to you on. So with this letter of support, it's a different type. You understand what I mean?
Understand.
So that's why we're, we're questioning so much, because we, we feel like it's something that we're, we really need to look at as far as the wording on the letter. And in no shape or form, we'd like to commit to anything at this point, as a Commissioners' Court, I believe.
Is that what you just communicated? That should be in the letters, that is no, no way in form is going to be a commitment of giving us, that we actually going to be, you know, getting, obtaining property from the county.
What would you benefit from receiving the letter?
Mr. Strada said it goes a long way, especially because we're also, not only we're trying to secure other funds as well, and of course, a lot of people don't know who I am. So by going into these other rooms, like I'm talking to Mr. Cabello today, well, why are you, why are you, why, who are you? If I had this letter, and then it just gives me also a little bit of support, saying, hey, look, we're all trying to be on the same page. Already have it from the city. I'm just here to get money from the county. So now we can all figure out, how can we work this problem together? Not guaranteeing any, any, any property, but at least we recognize that there is an issue. We have a housing shortage in Carrizo, and the people who are really trying to, we have the ability to tackle this neighborhood housing services. So it's just going to give me a little bit more weight when I go into rooms and speak with different, different playmakers that involved in this process.
And you secure grants and also loans, the cost of?
Our upfront costs.
Your upfront costs, and also what taxpayers pay, like?
No, this is not nothing to do with the taxpayers. So essentially, this, what this program is, is the land bank tries to work collectively with cities, municipalities, counties, to try to acquire the land that's up for sale that's been lost to taxes, tax delinquencies. And they request for the, those taxes norm. No, so normally, no. Normally, the way that it works is that our tax delinquent attorneys will come here, you'll see it because we have one here coming up, and they get permission to sell that property. And they sell that property for the delinquent taxes or whatever amount we can get, and then it comes back into our, into our budget, into the county, and the property is sold to Joe Blum. So what he's saying is that there are some tax properties since 2007 that haven't been sold. So he's asking for us to get those properties and essentially give them to him, or not him necessarily personally, but to the land bank, to give it to them free of cost, and then they'll turn around and flip that house, fix it and whatnot, and then they will set, resell it to our constituents at a lower cost.
But we're not the only one, moving over to that house because of the taxes, right? Like the school and everybody else?
Correct.
So everybody has an agreement, like it wouldn't be just Commissioners' Court that could give away these properties, and we have to be in agreement with everybody that gets a portion of that tax.
Correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I guess I'll motion for a letter of approval with the?
Yeah, real quick, give me one second. I have our, one of our delinquent tax attorneys that's here. If you want to come forward, Mr. Osso.
Yes, Judge, thank you. Hey, I actually have, let me give you my information. So just to bring in additional context, that's exactly right, Judge. We do have, in fact, an item coming up on, on this. The typical parameters is basically, we either will, we will, we have a list of properties that have been struck off to the county. There are properties that have also been struck off to the cities or to school. And, and obviously, Mr. Osso's office is also coordinating and managing a variety of those. We manage them as well. We put them on our website. We coordinate with the Commissioners' Court to try to put these on. So there's one, for instance, there's a couple on here where we're trying to put them up at the courthouse steps again, just to try to, which means it'll get publicized in the newspaper again, try to draw up some interest again in the properties and highlight. There've been mitigated or, or lower amount of bidders at the sales. And so if, if there isn't a buyer there, that kind of prevents our ability from, despite, you know, publicizing it, moving forward with either the District Court's Office or this court, to try to get a buyer. If there's ultimately not a buyer, that's, that's a problem. So having a partnership like this, and, and when I say partnership, I just mean to say is, if there's a player within the community that is willing to coordinate on a case-by-case scenario, I'm more than happy to review and be a part of that process to try to make sure that we're taking care of this. I don't know if this really needs to initially have this in place. I, I see the argument in terms of providing some, or, or giving some credibility. The only concern I have with that as well is that I have, we now represent the city of Carrizo as well. I'm aware that there are other local nonprofits that are interested in doing this as well. So I don't know if lending one particular.
Correct.
One over another, whether the court wants to engage in it. I think that this overall is a great concept to, to initialize. It's something that we kind of were thinking of bringing on, another Outfit Texas Communities Group is another group that they coordinate to try to get grants in place and do things of this nature. They just don't have that component of affordable housing mechanism as a nonprofit to, to initialize that. So having something like that, again, I feel like it's, that is a great partnership or idea to have. It's just I, I wouldn't want to put Commissioners' Court in a position to pigeonhole them. I think it'd be great, as a case-by-case scenario, look at the particular accounts, if it makes sense, not only to the county, but to all the other entities, to go ahead and convey over the property with the idea that it's going to provide affordable housing within the community. By all means, let, let's do it. I just don't, again, I don't want to necessarily pigeonhole and, and lend credibility unnecessarily, but I absolutely want to coordinate, and I want you to call me. That way, we can send you a list of what we have, and then come to Commissioners' Court on, maybe it's a whole list of properties that can be reviewed, and then distributed over to the other entities and.
That's exactly, that, you understand my position? That's exactly why I'm saying about being committed.
Can I ask how a letter would pigeonhole, like?
Go ahead. She wants to know why the letter would pigeonhole.
It would be a message to, it wouldn't legally bind you, but it would be a message not only to the community, but to other nonprofits, that you're coordinating and providing potentially preference towards one nonprofit over another. And so that, you know, is there really a need for that? I, I don't know. I, I think, you know, if, if there wants to be a proclamation, or something of a nature that's more generic in terms of coordinating with local nonprofits, or nonprofit, Texas nonprofits, or however you want to coordinate or function it, I think it is, it is a great idea. And I'm, I'm very glad that whoever you got synced into had that concept and, and bring it. I think there's value in it. It's just, I, I think, at the end of the day, we can still coordinate and get what they need done on a case-by-case scenario as opposed to making it a blanket.
And I believe within the law of 379, you don't have, so that's the other question we're trying to figure out, is who establishes the land bank? Does the local municipality have a partnership with a nonprofit? It's just different components of who's going to be overseeing the actual land bank. But you have the ability, it, it doesn't, having a land bank doesn't pigeonhole you to just one. You can give it, you can give these properties to the, it's, it's a lot of properties on the matter of delinquency. So it doesn't have to be, we just ask it for three, and then another nonprofit asks for, you know, three or five, and it, if they're, because they're a lot bigger nonprofits than we are, we can only handle three at a time. So, but it doesn't pigeonhole us, but it does, is make, you guys, let's be honest. Right now, land banks in Texas, Houston, Dallas, and then there's Texas, there's, I think I put it in the list, there's only three of them. Dimon County will be the fourth. They, we'll be the, the next one that'll start making other counties say, hey, how did y'all do this? This is going to be a bigger thing for you and your community by standing up and saying, you know what, we need to take, address this issue and put people back in homes. So not only will the letter help us, it'd be more for you, because you'll, you'll communicate this to your constituents, like you really care about providing.
I'm happy to workshop the letter, make sure it's, there's no issues or concerns and go from there. I haven't seen it, so.
So we, so we can have another nonprofit organization coming into, in the court to also try to establish this, this project? So legally doesn't bind this only to one?
Assuming, depending on what the language, I haven't seen the letter.
I'm trying to get it all together.
But that, that would be, if, that would be my recommendation, is to make sure that whatever is ultimately promulgated, that it looks, and, and that it says exactly that, allows for the flexibility for any other qualified nonprofit to be able to coordinate and do exactly that.
That's why he's saying that doing this letter may put a pigeonhole us, and that's why, that's what I'm saying, that I don't want to be committed, because if we do a letter that's specifically for the land bank, then that opens up the door for us to do it for everybody. And that's what Mr. Osso is saying, is that it may commit us. Instead, we can do a letter of support, but a letter that's broad, that's like an umbrella letter that covers anybody that comes before the court. And essentially, this letter is just that, a letter of support, that we support the cause, not that we're going to agree to give anybody the land, whether it be Mr. Coates or whether it be this entity over here or that entity over there. It's just that we are, essentially, my distinct understanding is that we're supporting the cause, and that this gives Mr. Coates, I guess, more. cause and that this gives Mr. Coates, I guess, more credibility with the other individuals and organizations that he's trying to talk to. Yeah.
I have a motion to approve a letter of support with your, um, umbrella, um, to just saying that we support the cause in the, in the county area. Um, and welcome anybody that has the same idea, I guess, to say. I know that Mr....
Banks, me, Coates.
Mr. Coates?
Yes.
And he's been here multiple times, and I didn't know that there was other nonprofits in the area that were looking to do this, but I do know that I've seen him multiple times trying to push and drive this, and he does seem passionate about it. Um, and so for that, I do feel comfortable, um, motion to give under your reward, just saying we're not pinning ourselves to one, we're just supporting the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Noguera. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Coates.
On the addendum, I am gonna call 3.29, um, to accept the SM Energy donation for the sports complex. Um, commissioners, um, as you are aware, I advise this court that, uh, SM Energy has been so gracious in trying to work collectively with the county for the benefit and best interests of our constituents, and they have so graciously offered to give a donation for the Demet County Sports Complex that is currently being, um, built. So at this time, I would, um, ask the court to approve the donation in the amount of a hundred and three thousand nine hundred thirty-seven and eight cents, um, from SM Energy. A hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven and eight cents, um, from SM Energy.
You're asking us to approve, to accept the donation?
To accept the donation. Motion by Commissioner Noguera. Second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. At this time, I would ask kindly of all the commissioners and if SM Energy could come forward, um, to the front of the, of the commissioner's court.
So we should feel a little more comfortable with the report as we hear this, um, statement. You want to come on the other side? Joe, you want to come on the other side?
Yeah.
Thank you, I mean, so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Thank you. Here was an additional, yes. 3.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval Order Resolution, Authorizing Approval of Proposed Texas State Opiate Settlement Agreement. Um, this is an item that was requested to be on the agenda by, by Mr. Pereira. Um, as you all are aware, um, every year we have the, um, opiate settlements that the state of Texas has in litigation, in which the county, um, receives a certain percentage of funding. Um, this is more of a formality. Um, so that's exactly what I'm requesting is, um, to authorize the county judge to sign the, um, opiate agreement resolution. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Public Resale Struck-Off Property IDs for 16457 and 15669.
So again, commissioners court, Carlos, I'll sit with Purdue Brandon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Okay, so I'll have two properties. These, uh, properties, just for context, they've gone through the entire due kit process so, and collection process, so we went through our call center, we went, reached out, tried to get ahold of, find the owners, coordinating with getting payments. Um, they did coordinate to, to go ahead and do that, then moved forward with litigation. We have been served in the lawsuit, um, coordinated to, uh, getting judgment as of against them. Uh, they never responded to the pleadings, they didn't show up to court, uh, default judgment was taken, uh, they were then notified, uh, that the judgment became final. And then, um, after, uh, they were also, still provided opportunities to coordinate, sent notification of sale, notification of sale went out, deadline passed, properties were put up for sale then at the court out step, it was publicized, they were provided notice, and, uh, unfortunately, at the sale, there were no winning bid, or there were no bidders at the minimum bid amount. So for the first property, 16457...
At the minimum amount? So nobody bid $200?
Yeah. Um, that, that was back in 2003. And so this is one of those examples that, this property's been struck off since, um, 2003. So that's under previous regime, previous attorneys. And so, you know, we're, we've identified it, we're trying to see if, hey, we can put this back on. So where this sits is Catarina, as you're coming into it, right, it has that bend off 83, there's a guard rail that goes all along that area before you get to that...
I don't know if it's still there, but...
The guard rail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I've had so many accidents down there.
Oh, since October?
Yes.
All right, that's, okay. Well, that may, 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 make things easier because there was a, it was kind of, it was several lots over within the guard rail, kind of more in the middle of the bend. Um, and so access is gonna be a bit of an issue on it. Uh, I did verify, there's, uh, one of the tracks closer to the original entry, at least, um, uh, for that guard rail, as it was last, we saw it. Um, does have taxes too, so that'd be an opportunity. Uh, but, uh, and then there's another parcel that, that, uh, is also struck off to the county a little bit further along, so, um, but for whatever reason, a couple of the property owners, I mean, hey, they're still paying their taxes, obviously, there's nothing that can be done to her with the land, there's no improvements on it. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's sitting there, so it, it's an opportunity, should, I think one of the properties is owned by a ministry group. Um, so I don't know if there was thought, process there at one point of maybe developing land for church or something of that nature. Um, but we wanted to put it on so that way, hey, if there's anybody who's interested in it, welcome to put in a bid. Um, the value currently on the roll for the count is $400. Uh, you can start the bidding at 400, you can start the bidding at 200, you can start the bidding at any amount, since this is a public resale and it's been over six months from the date of the sale, from which it was struck off. So, um, I refer to you all, but we would like an opportunity just, um, circulate it out over there and hopefully somebody go ahead and naps it and get it back on the roll.
So for the 200, you went up to 400?
Uh, sis, yeah, the value, with the appraisal. Now what the market value is, that's another story, but...
Can you, um, advise us in regards to the second one as well? And then we can give you numbers.
Yes, absolutely. So the second one's a little bit more involved. The second one I have been in front of commissioners court before, um, and that one, we did have a sale back, uh, in April, uh, 2024, deed was filed in May of 2024. Uh, this one had an, uh, a, this was a homestead, or it's, I guess in theory is still a homestead. There's an individual living on it. Um, the individual has been making payments towards the county. So originally, the amounts were over $7,000 that were due to the county. Now that's been reduced, um, to about $2,700 since due to the county. She's been making $700 payments. So, um, she's still, however, owes $20,000 in taxes, um, to all the units. So most of it is due to the school district. Um, but, uh, but, you know, we only represent the county in this matter. Uh, so what we're trying to do is see if we can have it so that we can at least set the sale for that minimum bid amount, however, abate any action as long as she's continuing to make those payments. And the idea is that then we'll have an order revoking and, and un, and, uh, basically the order sale, um, once she's paid everything off to the county. That'd be option one. The other option would just be to not place it on, uh, public resale.
You made a statement right now in regards to that this property is a rental property?
No, uh, it's the, the former owner is, is still living on it. Um, so at, at this point in time, it's, I mean, she's, it's been foreclosed on. In theory, the county could proceed and...
I, I don't know why I thought you said lots, like I thought she was, like, renting. Okay.
Oh, no, no, she's, she's living there.
She's making payments on it.
And she hasn't been spending?
She, she's been making payments. We, so last time we coordinated, there really wasn't anything going on. We wanted her to get onto a formalized payment contract, so we tabled it so that we can get her onto a formal payment contract. She never got onto a formal payment contract. We've tried multiple times, she never did, but she started making on her own the $700 payments. And so we're kind of like, well, oh, okay, that's good. That's not really providing the level of security I'd like for my clients to have. So I'd like to at least have it so that if y'all need to do it, y'all can move forward with an order already and post it for sale as needed. But if she's still making the payments and everything is great, then all we're doing is monitoring, um, it and, and, uh, at such a point in time as that we need to, we can proceed based off of the order that would be written here to date. Again, the idea that we debate foreclosure, um, unless and until she stops making payments.
Since she's giving payments, can we just monitor it?
And we can do that as well, absolutely. I just wanted to give you all the options.
Taxes, but I wouldn't want to put...
Right.
Somebody out on the streets.
Yeah, I just wanted, and, and that's why we've, that's why we didn't do it last time. Uh, that was my concern. Um, and so I, it's just, it was, what, to the other entities. Now thankfully, she's, she's been taking care of the county, it's just, there's a lot of, uh, that's a lot of taxes for the other entities too, um, so...
And so is the communication, even trying to reach out to her, um, would have, what contact, is it just letter, are you calling?
Calling, we have, yeah, we've, we've corresponded with her successfully multiple times, it's just literally just not came back with us.
Um...
And, and she's been by the tax office, we've coordinated with her, um, and the tax assessor, sitting down to try to get everything in order and in place.
I don't know if it's legally allowed to ask, but I can share it ultimately.
I don't think we can ask that, you'd have to go into executive session.
I have, uh, I have a motion to move forward with the first property and put it, and hold back on the second property based on the fact that she is making payments. This is actually what we're looking for. We're looking for somebody to, uh, take responsibility, starting to make payments on the property. It might take her a little longer, but as long as she continues to make payments, that's my motion.
Yeah. And as soon as we need to, and if we find any gaps, then we'll come back again.
And I just wouldn't want to, like, motion to approve it and then it not give her a fighting chance and the case may be that something happened and she can't make a payment one month, um, so...
I have a motion by Commissioner Udenda?
Second.
So we're putting this first one for sound.
Just the first one to sound, at the, um, minimum bid, is that 400, Commissioner Noguera, that you're gonna put on your motion?
Yes, sir.
And I have a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Just for confirmation, that was at the 200?
400.
400, okay. And so, uh, if, if there's no objection, Judge, I'll, I'll send a clean copy, put that identified, um, for, for your signature, and I will remove that second property from the exhibit.
Is there anything that, like, limits you from, like, maybe making, um, like, in-person contact with them? Because what I fear is, like, since they're out, like, not, you can't bring in their age, right? Maybe it's just somebody that doesn't trust the, the phone, because you know there's a lot of scams going around and sometimes the letter doesn't suffice the urgency of it. Um, so maybe, like, making an in-person meeting with the individuals, that way they can understand the severity of it and know, like, all their options, that way we don't...
I have an answer for that. We know, small community, we know these people, we reached out to where she works.
Oh, she's aware of it.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Yeah.
And there's also just, yeah. And also, just so you're aware, Commissioner, there's also a certain protocol that we have to take legally, because if they, sometimes, they don't sell, on a legal level, as the attorneys, they have to go through the district court to foreclose them. And there's, there's certain ways of how we have to serve the people. And so at the same time, we can't go and harass them either at their homes.
I see, I see.
So there has to...
When she came into the office and we made her wear... Okay. Like you said, she came in on her own. Okay. We made her wear, it's already been struck off to the county, and so we did make contact with Purdue. What do we do from here? She's here, she's wanting to pay, so that's when we move forward with her payments. And she's been coming in nicely.
Oh, I agree with what you're hoping for, that's true.
No, yeah, and like you said, we're not gonna owe anybody other their house either, so, you know, we help them as much as we can.
I've never had to do it, 10 years that I've been doing this, I haven't had...
Yeah, we help them as much as we can, and we ask them, how much can you pay comfortably? So that, that way they don't default.
Okay. Well, I feel better knowing that any of y'all guys are on it.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience in answering all my questions and in processing.
My staff is very well to communicate with you. Appreciate it.
Yes, because the Commissioner Udenda's motion was to approve to, um, redo the public resale for, um, 16457 at the starting price of 400, and to, um, remove the sale with the stipulation that the party is going to be monitored in terms of payment. And if it, she doesn't pay, then I guess you put it back on the agenda for that resale.
Yes, sir.
And it was second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Um, Mr. Osce, am I correct, I mean, am I mistaken? 3.5, do you want to go into executive session for that one?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, I'm gonna recall that case so I can go over some of the other stuff and then I'll recall it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from County Extension Agent Ms. Lysikos for the month of January 2025?
Motion to table.
I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Udenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.7, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from FCH Agent Ms. Cuddy Salmoniels for the month of January 2025?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions of Ms. Munoz?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Do you have a question?
I have, I can answer your question. So it's just on the, about the training, I wanted to some information. But I can answer it in a whole.
3.8, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Roto Reina Events Coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Boone, for the month of January 2025.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Questions of Ms. Boone?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Boone. 3.9, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Dimon County Call Course for the month of January 2025. Questions of Ms. Boone?
Motion to approve.
There are no questions. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Boone. 3.10, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Airport for the month of November and December in January 2025.
Motion to table.
Motion to table by Commissioner Duokawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.11, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Aramula, for the month of January 2025. I do want to put for the record for those individuals that did notify my office. I appreciate it, and I thank you very much. I think it's a professional thing to do when you're not gonna be here. And wanted to put for the record for the constituents of Constable Andres Aramula. He wanted me to advise the court and his constituents that he is not going to be here because he does have a doctor's appointment in San Antonio.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Commissioner Duokawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.12, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Constable Precinct 3, Mr. Robert Valderas and Juventino Torres for the month of January 2025.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Constable. Questions of Constable Valderas?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Who's second? Second by Commissioner Adama Montes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.13, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Constable Precinct 1, Mr. Rudy Lopez, for the month of January 2025. Did you submit a report, Constable? Questions of Constable Almas?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Constable, were you, were you able to find a desk?
Yes. Just, uh, do you have some chairs?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.14, discussion and appropriate action monthly report from Constable Precinct 4, Mr. Manuel Rosas, for the month of January 2025.
Morning, Judge.
Morning. Questions of Constable Rosas?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
I just want to thank Sheriff Constable for letting me the hand agree.
Thank you so much. 3.15, discussion and appropriate action, approval of purchase of new vehicle, 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 PPV four-wheel drive, $53,897 from COs of Precinct 1 and 4.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. Discussion on appropriate action, approval of purchase, emergency lighting and accessories, emergency lights for the 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 PPV four-wheel drive and accessories. I have a motion. This is by ordering.
No, I sent the three quotes.
Are you going with the least expensive?
I'm going with the Mr. Aramula, because he has the radio, he has the-
This far west one is $23,000.
Correct.
And Alvarado is how much?
Thirty-four thousand.
But he's local, so anything-
Correct. Also, far west point three does not come with the radio, does not come with camera system, spotlight, decals. Alvaro comes with it.
So that would be like an additional $15,000, $20,000 for the radio.
Correct, radio is. And Alvaro does have radio.
And he's local?
And he's local.
He's from Crystal City.
And if, if anything does have the lights, it would be far worse for the people.
Does he carry warranty for them?
Why do you warranty the lights and why can't warranty the wiring?
I'll second it.
Nobody, nobody has. I have a motion by Commissioner-
Duokawa.
Who? Oh, you, I apologize, Commissioner. I didn't see you there. Commissioner Alonso Carmona motioned it. Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Adama Montes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I raise my chair.
Okay, do that.
How long it'll take for you to get the truck?
They do have some in stock. That was about two weeks ago, but they, they did have fifteen. So I'm sure I'll get some call this week to see if they still have some.
And they'll have the radio too. Are you still using Mr. the Sheriff's Office handheld radio?
Yes, I have this handheld and the-
Thank you, Sheriff, for letting me use it.
We should, you want to-
Yes, we, the ones that we got from Ms. Rodriguez, right?
Yes.
And then also, yeah, and also Middle Rio Grant is providing some as well. Thank you.
Constable, what other plans for the charger, your driving charger recovery? Yes. What are you gonna do with it? Uh, well, I hope to get some reserves and maybe, maybe use the lights. Everything still works because I'll cross out town. It does need a lot of work to, for dogs and tires. Maybe okay for locally. Yes, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate how you broke the three quotes down, Mr. Rosas. Thank you. 3.17, thank you, Commissioner. I mean, Mr. Constable, Mr. Rosas.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Could I vote, do we vote on it, Ms. McDaniels? Yes, okay. 3.17, discussion and appropriate action, approval for tax assessor collector Mary Sandoval and Chief Deputy Lizette Martinez to attend the TSA 857th Annual Workshop on March 23rd, 26, 2025 in San Marcos, Texas.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duokawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question for you, Ms. Sandoval. Just for clarification purposes, on the accommodations for the hotel? It's 553, correct? No, 563?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Right here.
I'm going to the laptop.
Oh.
On hotel cost?
Yes.
Well, five, nine, three.
Yes, I set up five.
Yeah, actually, get like a certification. It's allowing you to pass more of a train informational.
Mr. Rodriguez is a supervisor? Mr. Rodriguez is a supervisor, like, for-
No, Mr. Turbe is a supervisor. But Mr. Rodriguez is following behind Mr. Turbe. You always have to have two individuals certified in case one of them retired or-
Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duokawa, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. It's just for a one day, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
He's only gonna stay there for one night?
That what?
It says six, seven, and eight? Oh, no, it's to check in on the fifth.
Yeah, he checks in.
Okay. I was confused because right here it just says one, one day on the booking.com.
Can't access the internet.
I don't know.
Go on the travel because all for two doesn't have the number of, it just has the note.
And divided by three.
3.19, discussion and appropriate action, approval for change order number two to Katie Lane, Precinct 2.
Mr. Carmona, where is this? You're located?
Three miles out of Capitola, going to San Jose. Across another town where the old Anadarko was.
Ma'am?
Across where the old Anadarko was.
Commissioner, do you, if you remember where the old Anadarko, it's now Crescent Energy?
Right.
That building, if you're going to a ticket pass, that building's on right-hand side. It's a key lane, so it's on a little hill.
Oh, okay.
It's a, it's a go-to-her-own.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve it?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Carmona has, um, this change order is to take or give back?
No, it says to increase.
It wasn't an increase.
An increase?
It says on that second page, it has, this is, change order is to increase $9,800 to the contract. So to-
They need to do a more modification of the goal.
To add more to the amount.
Yes.
So if it's to add more, it should have been 70, 754,000?
It was 90?
This is 733,000.
9,800?
She, I know, but she's saying-
The what?
She's saying that instead of it showing $733,456.70, it should reflect 750, what?
That's what I asked Ms. Virginia, and she said that they, that they had done it like that, but it was $9,800, the amount that it shows on the, on the last page.
I, I see what, what you're talking about, but-
I don't know why it was done like that, that this is something we can either figure, but we've been waiting so long for this that it's been already months and, I think it's, it's just 9,800 for the record.
And then you get mad at me? And then you get mad at me?
No.
My, have we done the motion?
Wait, yeah, there was a motion, but we haven't, we have not voted yet.
Do you want to do your motion with the clarification?
Would you amend when you-
I think the problem is-
754,000?
Commissioner Duokawa, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to direct your attention to line item 16 and 17. If you can see there, there's credits. $10,000 for allowance of road profile as build verification. And then there's another credit for allowance for material testing during construction of $10,757. Those are credits. I suppose that, you can see on number two, column change order number two, there's 9,800. So when they subtract that, you get that 733,456 because there was credits already.
So then there's increase and decrease.
Correct.
So the change order is basically an adjustment.
Pretty much. I mean, it's an increase, the change order's an increase. However, he has a credit of $20,757, as you can see in the parentheses in the second column. So when you subtract that, he still has some money that's there, and that's why the amount reflects 733,456.70. You see it? See, I am nice to you after all.
That's the road they did all over again, because we had a, they did it the first time, and then they came back and fixed it properly.
If you're comfortable with that, Commissioner Duokawa, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to keep the motion as it is, Commissioner Duokawa, or you want him to still change it?
It's here in the, in the memorandum.
No, I know, but Commissioner Duokawa, who had a discussion, an inquiry, because her understanding was that it should be, reflect 754,000. So she had recommended Commissioner Carmona change his motion to say that it's gonna be approved subject to it being clarified if it's 733 or 754. We can leave it like that just to be on the safe side. But I think that that's, the way I read it is that those two in parentheses are credits, which indicates why it's still 733. Is that fine with you? Commissioner Urenda, you second. Is that fine with you?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.2, discussion and appropriate action to approve to submit IT equipment surplus, Precinct 3. Good morning, Harvey. It's your turn.
It's over.
No, no, it's he, I get.
Yeah, we just, we cleaned out IT department. He worked really good. I'm trying to make sure that we were getting rid of anything that just wasn't in use. So this is what the surplus list is. So we need to add it to surplus so that way we can dispose of or just get it out of the IT to clear up some space in his office.
That's, that's not that's ready to-
Yeah, stuff that's ready to fill. We still might have more right in the-
Home shelves. That's near the area.
Awesome. Thank you.
Were you, were you-
Where are you, where are you, you're going to remove it under the... Well, I'm looking to surplus. I'm not sure what...
Get with this.
Where are you going to take it?
So first we had it, Ms. Virginia said that the process would be to surplus it through Commissioner's court. And then after we surplus it through Commissioner's court, then she gets to go in and see if there's anything that's salvageable to sell. And if there is, then they auction it. If not, then we're able to dispose of anything.
Yeah, but my question is, once it's established that surplus, where are you going to... Because we're lowering... The reason I'm asking is because we talked about an option to get rid of a bunch of equipment a year ago, and we still have it sitting there. So we approve this, which obviously we're working that, where is it going to go meanwhile?
Maybe the metro? I was waiting on Ms. Virginia. I was just following her, her protocol. Yeah. I was the one that, he put it on the Jennifer heads, but I was the one that asked the auditor's office on what was the proper protocol to do it. So I was assuming even metro or it would honestly just relieve us of the responsibility of having to hold on to it to the IT department. Because we do need more room with there. So I was assuming maybe metro.
On the desktop, just make sure that we remove the hard drive?
Yes, ma'am.
Because of all the information it has. And then we have to call San Point or we have to call a computer company to config them up?
Oh, okay. I just get rid of those.
Oh.
Well, thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Urdenda. Second by Commissioner Drogokava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Get Starlink Internet for Bigwell's Office.
So, gents, we did, there was a motion on the back when Mr. Carmona was here to approve to get internet over there. The process just was never completed and done. So I've been working basically with my hotspot in the office. Yeah, it's taken until... So that's how I'm able to get anything done. AT&amp;T was charging us, I mean, to add the three quotes on there. So you can see all the different quotes. I think there was one for $800. There was one for $600. And then Starlink, which would be a first-time startup cost would be $469.79. But that's just for the equipment and stuff for the first month. After that, then it would charge us $140 a month, which ended up being the cheapest one that we found.
The... There's a Starlink for $469.79 and one for $569.79. Which one is it? The setup is $569.79?
Honestly, whatever you feel comfortable and comfortable for. The difference between the two startups is the one terabyte and the... No, I'm sorry, one is the residential rate. It's just a gigabyte that they were offering us.
Yeah, residential is a regular standard user. Then there's one with 20 gigs of priority internet. And then another, I believe, was at 100 gigs of priority. So there's three of them.
Oh, I see. Four terabytes, one terabyte.
So...
Do I have to pick?
Well, the rate, I'm asking, the startup essentially for two of them is the same, with the exception of the last one is 100, about $100 more to start up. But what you're saying is that one of them is $140 a month? One of them's $250 a month and one of them's $120 a month?
Yes.
And this is for...
Starlink internet. It's supposed to be really good quality, especially for like the rural areas.
If it works out well, I was thinking even trying to maybe get for the landfill or to the offices in Natchitoches.
Yeah, she, when Marky was here, he set a hotspot for her at the landfill.
Commissioner, is it a commercial?
The one's in one. Which one was commercial, Harvey?
The 20 gigs and 100 gigs.
38. Back in session from executive session. In regards to item number 3.5 Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding the Overpayment and Erroneous Refund Application Submitted on Property ID 148023148025. The court's motion is going to be to approve the overpayment refund for the application submitted on property ID 148023 and 148025 with the stipulation that the Commissioner's Court and the county judge are authorizing Purdue and their agents representing Dimak County to confer with the tax property owner in regards to mitigating or offering alternatives to the refund, possibly in terms of a credit to that account. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Drogokava, second by Commissioner Talamates. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Drogokava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The time now is 12:40, and I am going to call the public facilities meeting into order. Let the record, let all commissioners and county judges are present. We do have a quorum. 1.3 Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, January 27, 2025. That motion is made by Commissioner Drogokava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Any new business? Is there any new business?
For the VP?
This is for the public facilities.
I'm trying to get out these reports, that way I can submit reports for the area. Because sometimes by the time they come up here, we're so far into the meeting, I forget. We do have some parts and stuff like that that we're waiting to cover some of the pending work orders that we have out there. A lot of it is just having issues because there are commercial equipment. So it's not something that I can go get those or anything like that. But I think that we are getting Brown going in the right direction with them. We also did meet with Train, which is the AC people. We also have... We're going to be able to think that we have a resolution to the issues that we're having over there in the AC. The perpetration also did update our requirements for our workers. So we are also complying with them in hopes of always maintaining a working relationship between the sector and the county. And the only thing that we were waiting for to have confirmation on or see an update is I have a few work orders that are requiring the man lift. The scissor lift doesn't reach the height of requirement. And so we're making an update on the man lift. They're not urgent work orders to be done, but it would kind of help because since we're waiting on some of the more urgent work orders, it would just show good faith to be able to work on some of that other stuff. If we don't have an update, then Mr. Zavada advised me that I could have went, but I'm trying to not.
The man lift, we already picked it up as of Friday. On Thursday, we picked it up. Right now it's at the county park in Catarinas.
Okay.
Mr. Alonso Carmona sent it off to get it fixed. So it's been fixed. Picked it up for him.
Okay. So do you know...
You should be able to make it to speed.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. And so I'm not in favor of that. Thank you so much. Other than that, five minutes, five... I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Drogokava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.1 Claim Dogged Finance Sub... Excuse me. Public Safety, $3,484.86.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Drogokava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn.
So move.
Times 1043, I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Drogokava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. This meeting has ended. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.